Well, Happy New Year. We welcome everyone to the first Board of Selectments meeting for 2014. And I thought I'd just kind of hit a few of the highlights of 2013 and ask my colleagues to chime in and expand in any way you like. But it seemed like a reasonable thing to look back over the past year. And I will admit that I am doing the high points, not what I consider to be the low points. But we did begin 2013 with snow. Then we celebrated Martin Luther King Day at the Coolidge Corner Theater with our guest speaker, Boston City Councilor Ayanna Pressley. Over the next several months, we accumulated 60 inches of snow, which kept us digging, actually, through the first day of spring in March. And then in April, we had the Marathon bombing tragedy. And then we came together again at the Coolidge Corner Theater as Brookline Together and thanked all of those who did whatever they could and whatever was needed at a time of great crisis and confusion. In the spring and Memorial Day, we came together again for a time of remembrance. In September, we celebrated Brookline Day at Lars Anderson Park and had gorgeous weather. And then we were, or at least I was, amazed and delighted by the Rotary Club's dancing with our own local Brookline stars. In November, we lit up with first light as the days grew shorter and celebrated Thanks Hanukkah for the first time in a century. That was kind of a benchmark.
I thought it was Thanksgiving.
Hanukkah. I looked up and there were a lot of different ways of saying it. Anyway, and in December wrapped up the year with holidays and the first winter's snowfall. And it seems like we're right back where we started. Anyway, any additions or thoughts from other members of the board? You are welcome to chime in.
You've got one over there.
Oh, please.
I got at least one.
Please.
I thought one of the highlights, well, two highlights I want to mention. One is the dedication of the new housing at Olmsted Park.
Oh, right. Good thought.
Which I thought was a major triumph for the town. Approximately 30-plus units of affordable housing, opportunities for affordable housing are precious in this town. And we jumped on it. We got it done. And it came out above, even above expectations. I'm very proud of the town for taking the initiative on it and as proud as I'm going to be when the new park across the street, which by the way, ground has been broken unofficially on.
Great.
I'd go buy it and there's a backhoe there working already. When that park is dedicated, I'll be doubly proud. I also want to talk about B-Space. But I thought maybe I let selectmen Schutzky do that.
I ducked on that one.
Yeah. Well, yeah. First, I'll amplify something that Selectman Goldstein said about affordable housing. We also broke ground on a large expansion of affordable housing at Dummer Street.
That's right.
Right.
Which is a fair number of units. What is it?
Thirty-four, I think. Thirty-two, thirty-four, something like that.
Yeah. Infill. It looks to be a great project. We're committing some town funds and they're getting help from some federal funds going into that state. That's pretty exciting. And B-Space, I think, was probably, in terms of political highlight for me. And it really highlighted some of the challenges we're going to be having over the next few And the outcome of B-Space is being looked at by the override study committee, co-chaired by Selectman Banka and Susan Wolf-Ditka for the school committee. And one thing about B-Space, to me, that was a breakthrough, was the use of social media.
Hmm.
And that, to me, was a real eye-opener.
I definitely think we'll be seeing more of that.
Segment Daley? Well, I will just add that at the end of the previous year, having been designated an age-friendly city by the World Health Organization.
Right.
We actually made some substantial progress during the past year in making ourselves more age-friendly and having a senior health fair and some houses, housing forums.
Housing forums, yeah.
And a number of projects like that.
Yeah, right. Other additions?
Just following up, the override study committee has been working extremely hard and is extremely focused. And you will be hearing a report on January 21st from the override study committee regarding some interim thoughts.
Great. I do have one other thing that I just remembered, and that is we had the inauguration opening of the new teen center. Also, something that was accomplished in 2013, so another good thing to report. Okay. And now for 2014, we're looking forward to the next Martin Luther King Day on January 20th. It will be at 4:00 PM in the Coolidge Corner Theater. And I hope Selectman Goldstein can give us some additional details.
Yes, I'd be happy to. I've been working with a group of citizens and with Mr. Kleckner to plan this year's program. It's going to be something new and fresh. I'm pleased to announce that our guest speaker is Reverend Liz Walker, who many of you probably remember from her days as a newscaster and anchor person on Channel 4 local news, but is now an Episcopal minister and is a leader in our African-American community. She's, I've talked to Reverend Walker already, and I know that her speech will be uplifting and very interesting with a lot of personal details about her own struggle and her own rise. So we've got that planned. We've got a little bit, a few differences in our musical program from years past. Unfortunately, due to scheduling problems, the workman's circle, chorus, won't be able to join us this year. But we do have, and I don't know if it's two or three, but either two or three of the high school choral groups who are preparing a program as we speak, full of musical numbers that will be evocative and inspirational as appropriate for the day. And then we've got some, another interesting approach to the, that's something new we're going to try, too. You might have, if you went last year, you might have heard a little bit about the Sojourn Program.
Yes.
Which is a group of high school students who basically retrace the civil rights marches of the 1960s.
They went on a two-week tour, I think, right?
They do. So members of Sojourn are going to help us present a number of quotes from Dr. King and from other people who have continued Dr. King's fight and cause over the years. And we're going to have some materials that will be presented at the same time to help us chart and appreciate where we are in realizing those dreams. And I think there's been a lot of hard work going into the content of that, and I think you'll find it very interesting. So please, as Selectman DeWitt just mentioned, it's Monday, January 20th, 4:00 at the Coolidge Corner Theater, which by the way, we thank them, we've already mentioned them.
Host.
As last year's host for Martin Luther King Day and for the Brookline Together Day. They do nothing but support this community, and their generosity is certainly greatly appreciated.
So, any other, yes, Selectman Banka?
Yeah, I apologize. Thank you, Ken. I apologize for backing up a little bit to the override study committee. As I mentioned, we'll be reporting to the board on January 21st at that Tuesday's meeting. And we have scheduled a public hearing for January 22nd, and I just wanted to announce that.
Oh, good. All right. Good to know about that. Any other announcements from members of the board? Then we will move, one other thing. I'm going to ask Mr. Kleckner to tell us, we are very, I think, sad to say that there's a young person who's gone missing. And Mr. Kleckner, would you just explain what we know about it?
Sure. Madam Chairman, the Police Department today issued a press release informing the community and the public that there is a young man by the name of Caleb Jacoby who is missing from his home. And he's an age sixteen-year-old boy at 5'11", five feet eleven inches tall. And the Police Department has issued this press release with his photo. And along with his family and his school, a Monmouth School and a synagogue, the town is asking for, appealing to the public for their help. And if anyone is aware of the whereabouts of young Caleb, they are encouraged to contact the Brookline Police Department, 617-730-2222.
And we certainly hope that wherever he is, he's safe and he will be found and returned to his family. Okay. On with our evening's business. The items of the miscellaneous calendar, the first is the minutes from December 17th. Are there any corrections or amendments?
Whoops, sorry. One very minor.
Okay.
And I have passed on some minor edits also.
Then I move that we approve the minutes of December 17th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have a series of miscellaneous items. The first one is a change order, Mr. Giggly.
Good evening.
You probably get to do the next two or three, right?
I do.
Okay. How about it?
Okay. First item is change order number five, the amount of $8,675.63 to the contract between the Town of Brookline and Titan Roofing Incorporated. And this is associated with the Unified Arts Building Roofing Project. And the items on this change order include replacement of two smoke vent skylights on the roof and repairs to wide branch connections from the lower EPDM roof to the main downspouts leading from the main roof gutter system in two locations. And the total of those two items, as I said, is $8,675.63.
Why don't you just keep going?
Okay. The next item is change order number five to the contract between the Town of Brookline and Contractors Network Incorporated. This is associated with the Pierce School Auditorium Renovations Project. The net amount is $726.48. It consists of four items, an add to supply materials and labor to revise the conduit running pipe grid in the main area of the auditorium. Another is for fire stopping of existing openings. And another is for timing materials, repairs to the existing door frames, which were existing to remain but needed to be retrofitted for the new doors. And there were two small credits, delete the requirement for pressure testing of the new ductwork, and providing a credit to the town for travel to view stored materials in connection with payment of same.
Okay. Next?
The next item is a contract between the Town of Brookline and CBI Consulting Incorporated, the amount of $42,115. It's for the design of elevator renovations at Lawrence and Pierce Schools. It's the first of two elevators that will be doing, modernizing the mechanicals and bringing the elevators up to code.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Giggly about any of these?
Couple of quick questions. Why is it no longer necessary to pressure test the ductwork at the Pierce School?
Because the new ductwork is connected to the existing system. And we normally do pressure testing on all new ductwork. And it's proved to be very, even low-pressure ductwork, it has proved to be very useful in getting a balancing report and getting the systems to run properly. However, the system is, as I said, is connected to an old existing system, and it really doesn't, it's not going to tell you much if we just test the new items that were put in. And it was at the engineer's recommendation that it just wouldn't be, we wouldn't get any benefit out of it.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And then, just to clarify, a moment ago, you said that the elevator design contract was the first of two, but my understanding was that it was, this contract's for both the Lawrence and the Pierce elevators.
Right. But there are other elevators in the program in future years of the CIP.
This is the first contract.
That's right.
But there are two separate schools that have been.
Two separate schools under this contract, but there are future ones that are contemplated in the CIP.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Giggly? Then seeing none, I will propose that we take up items B, C, D, and E in one vote unless members would like not to do that. And I'll read out the votes. First, I move that we approve change order number five in the amount of $8,675.63 for work to be completed by Titan Roofing in connection with the Unified Arts Building envelope repairs contract. I move that we approve change order number five in the amount of $726.48 for work to be completed by Contractors Network Incorporated in connection with the Pierce School Auditorium Renovations Project. I move that we approve and execute a contract in the amount of $42,115 for the design of elevator renovations at Lawrence and Pierce Schools with CBI Consulting Incorporated. And I move that we approve change order number two, an actual credit or deduction of $2,900 for work completed by custom copper and slate in connection with fire station roof repairs. All in favor of those four items, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giggly. Now we have a Green Communities Solar Owners Agent Technical Assistance, Ms. Goff.
Hello. We received word in December that we got a grant for Owners Agent Services in the amount of $12,500. This is money that we will use to help us with our contract with Cadmus, who is our Owners Agent for the MAPC Regional Program.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Goff? I think we discussed this previously.
I just want to say, good job getting that. I know you worked hard on this, as did Laura Curtisase.
Yes.
Laura Curtisase, yep.
And we are looking forward to actually having some projects coming forward in the next year. Is that right?
The state regulations are about to be revised and announced, and then we'll be able to resume negotiations with Broadway.
Great. So that may become an accomplishment for next year.
Yes.
Good. If there are no further questions, then I move that we accept a grant, actually, execute a contract and accept a grant in the amount of $12,500 from the Mass Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division for Solar Owners, apostrophe, yes, Agent Technical Assistance. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Goff. Chief, you have a gift from our friends at the Korean Church.
Yes, I'm happy to report that once again, the Korean Church of Boston, which is located here before Harvard Street, has given us a donation again of $400. I would ask that the board accept this donation. We take this, like other donations, we put it into a special gift account. And then when we need something that isn't quite in our normal budget, recently, we put in a requisition for new PowerPoint projector that had failed at training. So this is what we use these type of funds for.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Selectman Banka?
Yeah, actually, not a question. I, but a comment. I had the pleasure of representing this board at a celebration at the Korean Church during this past year, recognizing the history of the church in Brookline, and also an anniversary for Reverend Kim, the pastor of the church. And it was a joyous occasion. It gave me the chance to practice some Korean.
How'd that work?
Not very. Well, it started out well. But it, the occasion actually provided an opportunity for me, on behalf of the board and on behalf of the town, to thank the congregation for their generosity over the years to the town, to, I think, both the police and the fire departments.
Right.
And they've also been quite generous with their space.
Yeah.
And allowed us to hold events there.
Yeah.
Segment Daley?
Yeah, no, I just want to add, I really appreciate that they do this and they, I believe, always give a gift to the Police Department as well. And I think it's great when our nonprofits understand the value of the services they get from your department, from the Police Department, and step up and contribute. So that's very nice.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I move that we accept a donation in the amount of $400 from the Korean Church of Boston for the Brookline Fire Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks, Chief.
The chief has an item on the main calendar.
Yeah, I know he does, but we're going to whip through these licenses and bring him back.
Okay.
It'll only be a minute. We now have several temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, which, unless there are objections, I will propose that we move together. I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Boston University for an event on January 12th. I move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages, not sales, to the Lars Anderson Autumn Museum in connection with events on January 11th, January 14th, and January 17th. And I believe that's all of the licenses. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we have a request for an advisory to the Advisory Committee for a reserve fund transfer, for which we will ask our administrator to explain what he wants the money for.
Yes. Madam Chairman, I think we all know that the Chestnut Hill Realty has submitted a formal comprehensive permit application under the Chapter 40B for development of 192 new units of housing at Hancock Village. And a comprehensive permit application, as you know, is a different kind of an animal. We don't typically have those kind of applications. Before the town, they're governed under, as its name suggests, Chapter 40B of the general laws. And it is a very unique process. And because of this unique process and because of the magnitude of the development, we are being very vigorous in our review of this development. And in connection with that, the town does need special expertise, including legal expenses and engineering expenses and other costs. To some extent, the developer will fund consultant expenses, but there's a limit to that and a limit to the scope of what they will and can do. I also wanted to mention that we are applying for a grant, a technical assistance grant from the state for up to $15,000. So, but even with that, those funds, we do anticipate that at least in this phase of the process, we will require $150,000 for a number of expenses. And I would like your permission to approve such a request to be transmitted to the Advisory Committee. I have spoken to the Advisory Committee Chairman about this, and so they'll take this up, I'm sure, promptly.
Quickly. And we do know that the balance exists to cover it. That's been confirmed.
Yes. Although I think we'll, next week, we'll be asking you for permission to seek expenditures above and beyond the snow removal budget. But not a surprise.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Kleckner? All right. Then I move that we approve and transmit to the Advisory Committee a request for a reserve fund transfer for 40B consulting services in the amount of $150,000. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And that moves us to the main calendar. And Fire Chief, Mr. Ford, would you join us again and tell us about your recruits?
Well, as you are aware, the board was gracious enough to authorize me to move forward with the filling of five vacancies. We began that process by contacting HRD in Boston and asking for what's called a certification, a list of those candidates eligible on the civil service list. The application process started. They were completed. At that point, the Brookline Police Department did the background checks, and they actually do a fantastic job for us, and they're very thorough. After those applications and background checks were complete, we went through our interview process. And at this time, we've arrived at five candidates to fill those five vacancies that I'm here before you to ask for conditional offers of employment. Those candidates, most of, not all of whom are here tonight, to begin with, the first one is Marcos Renderos. He is actually not off this certification. Mr. Renderos was on a previous certification but was serving the country in Afghanistan. So he was unable to fulfill the training requirements at that time. And we held a spot for him, and so he's with us now. He's 31 years old and a member of the Army National Guard. He returned in June from his deployment. Second, we have Ryan Buckley, 25 years old. He has an associate's in fire science from North Shore Community College. Third is Steve LaBelle, 26-year-old graduate of Westfield State. And he's worked for, as a dispatcher for the Brookline Public Safety Office since 2010. Fourth is Peter Moyer, 35 years old and a graduate from Northeastern with a bachelor's in science. And fifth, Tim Anastas, a 22-year-old graduate of Boston University. So I would ask that we move forward, offer them conditional offers of employment. At that point, they will have psychological testing done, medical exams, and then be scheduled for physical abilities testing with the state. And then, once all those are completed, I would be back before you, asking for offers of employment.
Very good, sir. Questions for the chief?
I know that some of the candidates are here, if not all are here.
I'm sure they'd be happy to stand up so you can see that.
I actually have the pleasure of meeting one.
Okay.
All are here tonight.
Well, I do see five. Looks like everyone's here. Well, welcome to your next phase, I guess I have to say. I can't promise you that the results will be, what the results will be, but we're very optimistic, so.
That's all up to them.
That's true. That is true. Good. Well, thank you very much. And therefore, I will move that we approve offering conditional employment to candidates Marcos Renderos, Timothy Anastas, Stephen LaBelle, Ryan Buckley, and Peter Moyer. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Banka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We'll look forward to seeing you all again. And then we have another vacancy to fill in the Recreation Department. Is there someone here to speak to us about that? No? Maybe not? Well, then, let's skip that one.
You don't get your picture taken today.
Right. You've got to come back later.
With a uniform.
So she's not here, huh? All right. Then we revisit one of the great events of last year, for better or worse, I guess, Boston Marathon 2014. And I see Mr. Nemser and Mr. Zweiger here. Welcome, both of you.
Josh.
And we know that you have hugely expanded the number of runners this year, which we think is amazing and wonderful and a little overwhelming, but I'm sure you'll do excellent work.
Well, that, thank you. That is indeed the plan. The field size is 9,000 athletes larger this year. 5,000 of whom are people who competed last year but were unable to finish the race because of what happened. They were offered a special opportunity to enter this year if they wished. Of the 5,633 such people, more than 80% of them did accept and are entered. That added 5,000 people to the field. And since we are accustomed to normally having three waves of 9,000 people, there was the opportunity to fill out that final wave with 4,000 more people, involving both people who had met the qualifying requirements and others who had been particularly and personally affected by what happened this past year and who wanted to run. So we'll have 36,000, a 9,000-person increase on a one-time basis this year.
Very impressive. I just would point out also that Team Brookline, which was organized and participated last year for the first time, has been year for the first time, has been overwhelmed with volunteers for this coming marathon year and are really looking forward to being part of it again. So we're very happy about that.
That is a reaction that Mr. Nemzer and I and all of us at the VAA have seen everywhere. While we are here to request a special use permit, we, above all, stand before all of you humbled by the outpouring of support that we received from the people in town of Brookline and so many other people from around the world in the face of what happened last year.
Selectman Daley?
I'm just wondering, just that last category, the extra people that get to join this year, does that include first responders from?
There are some such people. The way it was done was first to have the 5,000 people who are returning from last year. We then set aside, excuse me, some more entries for people who had met the qualifying standards but not been able, otherwise would not have been able to run. And after going through some other categories, including first responders, people particularly affected, there were still a great many people who were communicating with us and saying that it was important to them for a variety of personal, emotional, and other reasons to participate. And it was difficult to make selections because we knew we were hearing from the people from whom we were hearing, but there were perhaps others. So what we did was make a public announcement of a approximately two-week process by which people who very much wanted to run and who had been personally and profoundly affected by what took place last year, to give them the opportunity to write in and tell us why they wanted to run. And we then went through the process of making selections among them, which, as you might imagine, was quite challenging.
But now you have four waves.
That is correct.
Four waves, right. I know that we're gonna discuss the permit and permission, but are there any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Well, I just wanted to know, how much longer does that mean in terms of time? How much longer will we need to be in a on position here? And I imagine it means that we've got longer overtime shifts and everything, too.
Sure. Right on target. Our operations manager, Mr. Nemzer, is well in touch with all of that.
My planning responsibilities are much easier than evaluating the thousands of essays that came in, upon which 500. So I feel my job is a little bit easier than making the decision that Tom and some of the evaluation committee has had. Yes, the devil's in the details to be able to handle those extra 9,000 people, to deal with the new dynamic associated with the marathon. Something as adding that fourth wave does have a time impact. It'll have a time impact on the beginning of the day when we close the roads down, probably about a half an hour earlier. And that's because we're gonna start some of the field a few moments earlier than we normally do. Traditionally, at 9:00, our mobility impaired field leaves Hopkinton. We're gonna give them 15 minutes this year to leave at 8:45. So that's going to necessitate the communities closing down a little bit earlier so we can prep the roads. On the backside, that's when you'll see the larger impact, approximately an hour. The fourth wave will extend all the way until 11:20 in the morning out in Hopkinton with the final finisher, final starter coming across around 11:30. So adding the six hours to that, it's about an hour past what our normal road opening. We've been working closely with Chief O'Leary, Captain Grothman, about the planning. Planning is basically being conducted in a couple of different areas, the public safety side, the response to the tragedy that had happened, the planning associated with the operation side of it is a whole nother piece of it. We're working closely with them to be able to focus on some things like course control, additional barricades and coning on the course on Beacon Street from Coolidge Corner all the way back down into St. Mary's, just to be able to help deal with the crowd that's out there, because we expect big spectator crowd. But beyond that, the support from the service departments has been great as always, and we're touching upon all the infrastructure pieces that we normally work with them on the placement of our fluid stations, our medical stations, the clocks, all the things that traditionally go out there. So a lot of work ahead of us, but with great cooperation from Brookline as well as the other seven communities should shape up to be a great April 21st for us. Hour, at the end of the day, 15 minutes in the beginning of the day.
Great. Yes, Selectman Daley?
Well, I think what my colleague was trying to get at, though, was if we're having to pay our police more overtime, is that, I know usually you give us a gift payment to sort of cover some of our expenses, can we expect that you're gonna cover our extra hour of time of police overtime?
It is certainly our intent, yes, to support the financial needs of each of the communities as they have changed. Excuse me, or will change for this year. So short answer, yes. We will continue to communicate with public safety, police, fire, other authorities here to see what that is, as well as the addition of some equipment along the way. As Mr. Nemzer mentioned, there will be further barricading.
Okay. I had one other question, too, about the, and perhaps I just never really read it that closely in prior years, but I did notice this year that, and you mentioned this in your letter, that we were authorizing you to exclusively control and utilize the course roadway and the adjacent sidewalks. And the sidewalks was what surprised me, because we have many people standing on those sidewalks who are Brookline residents, and our police are patrolling that area. And so what does it mean if we have given you exclusive rights on those sidewalks?
It is a, it's a formulation of this that we have used in the past, and it may be that it has outlived its usefulness to some extent. It used to be that our course monitors would be there to help make sure that there were no intrusions onto the course from people who were on the sidewalks. We don't presume at all to control public sidewalks or to intrude in matters of public safety or what the police, fire, EMS people do.
And I think the appropriate revision to reflect the contemporary operating mode is that for stations, aid stations, medical stations, hydration stations, there could be use of the sidewalk associated with that, because they're right on the street. And so if I had to think of a genesis of that statement, because actually out in the western part of the state, there aren't no sidewalks. It's not a standard, it's not a boilerplate clause that I know that goes into.
But I do know that there are often some of those stations, just because of the physical arrangements that have to be.
Like the setup of that curb and stepping on.
On the sidewalk from the curb. Right, right. I wasn't surprised by that.
That's right. And each of those locations where there are support people working with the VAA on a sidewalk are determined in advance and coordinated with public safety authorities. So we don't presume.
I would like to suggest that it should say "use of the sidewalk is necessary" rather than the exclusive control and use.
"As necessary" is a perfectly appropriate revision from our perspective.
And that, Selectman Daley, I think that would just be something that we can transmit to the chief.
Right. Because this is a letter of request. It's not the language.
Right, yeah.
We're not voting this particular language.
I'm just responding to what was in your letter.
Very good observation.
Yeah. Okay.
And on the other piece, in all the communications with Captain Grothman and Chief O'Leary, as we've been talking about the planning process, we've asked them to articulate what the differences would be between last year and this year, what needs are, and public safety is going to prevail.
Clearly.
So on the left side, we've been talking about that relative to labor, police, that hasn't come to that detail, but the message has clearly been sent to them.
It's not just bullies. I mean, it's 9,000 more paper cups at every water station, too.
Everything in Maggie.
Well, and everybody's relatives that are there to watch them, there'll be 9,000 more relatives there to watch.
Well, my expectation is that the number of participants, both spectator and, you know, the number of spectators will increase proportionally to the number of additional participants, and this will certainly be a very big year, assuming it's not snowing on April 19th.
That would be our preference as well.
Can I ask, I'm sure that security is a major concern this year, and I'm sure that you, in cooperation with the various police departments along the route, are taking every precaution and probably doing some things a little differently this year. Can you, without giving away any details that shouldn't be given away, can you give us some idea of what's being done to assure safety, just of the runners but of the crowds?
I'll address it from two perspectives, if I may. First, sort of from a structural planning perspective, the public safety planning for the marathon is conducted through the auspices of the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. Of course, for each city and town along the way, for Brookline, Brookline makes its own plans for what will happen and has complete control over what happens. But to coordinate those efforts, to allow the towns to cooperate, coordinate with one another, as well as with state authorities, federal authorities, and all of the people that work on public safety, and there are a great many of them, it's done through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency through a series of meetings that generally take place at their headquarters in Framingham. The inter-agency working group and the law enforcement working groups annually meet on multiple occasions out there. And the amount of effort that goes into it, as well as the sense of cooperation among public safety authorities, is breathtaking to see. Everyone is looking for ways to solve problems and to do it collaboratively. What we found this year was that not only did it start earlier, the first such meeting after May, after action reports, took place, I think, in July, with a great many municipalities, state, federal agencies represented. The first thing that happened when everybody got there was the, spontaneously, the people who were there said, "Let's break this down even further. We need some further working groups to really make sure that we're ready for everything that will happen." And so the number of meetings, the degree of focus in certain key areas has increased this year to achieve precisely the sort of ends that you described, to make sure that everything that needs to be done is done. A lot of it, none of us will ever see or know about. There'll be a lot of people walking around who look like we look, but who will be from, could be people representing the town of Brookline, could be state authorities, could be people from the Department of Homeland Security. There is a strong, strong effort to make sure that everybody is safe this year and feels safe. It's as important to spectators, I'm sure, to feel safe, to know that that's happening, as it is to have people and assets in place to achieve it. That's one avenue of address. The other one that I had in mind is that what we hear from a great many of the senior public safety officials is that they also want to make sure that what is a joyous day, a day of celebration for a great many people in April every year, a day that celebrates an event that we know they own. There are about 2 million people that own this event. We are stewards to try to make sure that it goes the way it ought to go, but we're working on their behalf. Those public safety officials want to make sure that the opportunity to enjoy that day as it has always been enjoyed is still there, and that an appropriate balance is struck between both providing the reality and the appearance of public safety and the opportunity for people to enjoy the day as they do, whether they are spectators or whether they are out there running. If there's one thing that seems to have emerged from the concept of Boston Strong, of which we have all heard a great deal, it seems to have been that people here will live their lives the way they choose, regardless of what anyone else may try to do to stop it. And what I hear from public safety officials is they want to make sure that the day is what it has always been, with an appropriate degree of attention to security at the same time.
Well, and I will say that what you've just said underlines, for me, but also what I have heard, and that is that we have two, sort of, that came out of last year's marathon, it was Boston Strong and Brookline together, but what I'm hearing is Strong and Together. And that's a very good, powerful message.
Agreed.
Some of the things we will see in place are increased screening in terms of bags, especially for runners, increased just public safety in uniform, more bodies out there. The reality, as Tom says, in an open-air event, 26 miles of course, it's impossible to lock it down. Those are some of the concrete things that will help us with the safety posture.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, then I move that we approve a special use permit for the running of the 2014 Boston Marathon on April 21st, 2014, in language which will reflect the comments that have been recorded in our conversation this evening. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and we'll see you in April.
Thank you. It is a privilege to have the opportunity to do this. Let us support you every way we can. Some of it will indeed be.
We'll certainly be there in numbers, and Team Brookline will definitely be out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay. I see, I believe we can do the Recreation Department employment. Ms. Paradies?
Good evening. Lisa Paradies, Recreation Director. I'm here to request authorization to hire. It's a lead teacher at Sewell Recreation, the Early Childhood Center. We have a lead teacher who will be moving back to her native country in the Dominican in the first week of February, so I'm looking to fill that position.
So you need this person soon?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we'd like to transition as smoothly as possible.
Questions for Ms. Paradies?
No.
All right. Then I will move that we approve filling the position, where is it written out? Sorry. Wrong place. Vacancy in the position of Lead Teacher, Sewell Recreation Center GN-4 in the Recreation Department. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Washinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Go find a teacher. Okay. Our next item is a proclamation on Climate Week. And I do believe we have representatives from the Climate Action Committee here. Do you want to tell us what's in store? I know you've got a program worked out, and I can even hold up for anybody who's out there and can see this on camera, brochures that are going to be available around the town. Okay.
Hi, I'm Dave Pantalone, a board member of Climate Action Brookline.
I'm Mary Dewar, board member, and David and I, and Pat Marr and Judy Nourasny have been the planning committee that have worked with some wonderful partners this year to produce Climate Week. We have town departments, the Recreation Department, the Health Department, and we have businesses, the Booksmith. We have volunteers and artists and nonprofits that have come together to help produce this year's fourth annual Climate Week. And as we're, as Bessie said, we have this brochure that's hot off the press. You can find them around town, and you can see the posters around town. And we also invite you to go to the website, BrooklineClimateWeek.org, for all the details. This is a listing, and there are many more details on the website that, some new items have been added. For example, the Planning Department has a call for volunteers to identify the number of pedestrians and bikers in Coolidge Corner on, I think it's the 23rd, Wednesday, the 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00. So things are being added all the time. This is a good starting place. We have an array of events. We have everything from Climate Night at the Movies, Fern Gully for kids, and The Story of the Universe for teens, and we have special events to help people rise to the challenge of the climate crisis. We have some events in the great outdoors, everything from learning about the trees and the dynamic of the web of life along the Muddy River. And we have ways for people to make the most of things. And that is going to be happening in Brookline Town Hall on Saturday, the 25th of January, from 10:00 to 2:00. Leading up to that, there will be a children's clothing drive for kids 0 to 5, organized by the Brookline Commission on Women at the Public Safety Building. On Saturday, they will be collecting in the morning, but the Main Depot event will be happening from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, and we invite you all to come. The Recreation Department is collecting youth sports gear, and everyone can come and bring their sports gear, or exchange it, or walk away with skis and tennis rackets and cleats, whatever you might need, for no charge. whatever you might need, for no charge. And there are many other things happening, including new this year, the Food Court, the Depot Food Court. So we're having some restaurants to sample tasty fare from some great local restaurants. And volunteer Peggy Ueda has done an amazing job of coordinating that event for us. So I hope you'll study this and attend. There are many family-friendly events and some serious workshops that David's going to tell you about, about how we're rising to the challenge of the climate crisis.
Again, I just want to emphasize, it's the week of January 20th through the 26th, that's seven days. Most of our events actually start on Tuesday, the day after MLK Day, but the week starts off with MLK Day. And Mary mentioned a number of films. We have films on Tuesday night, Friday night, Saturday night, again, children's films and more heavier, serio- seriouser adult films about the challenges that we face. A film on Tuesday night, for example, about Tim DeChristopher and his fight to try to preserve national lands from energy development. On Tues- or rather, on Wednesday night, we have a panel discussion, a public policy panel discussion, where we're going to talk about some of the energy infrastructure decisions that need to be made in the next few years in Massachusetts and New England as a whole, as we face the challenge of becoming more and more wedded to natural gas while at the same time needing to wean ourselves from fossil fuels and bring in renewables. So we have Under-Secretary of Energy Bobby Cates-Garnick participating in that panel, along with Craig Eltmoss, an activist, and it should be a very interesting discussion. Thursday night, we have an author event over at the Brookline Booksmith. Wen Stevenson is a local writer, and he's written about the abolition movement and the rounding of resources, like the abolition movement, in social movement, how that applies to the climate movement. And it's fitting that he's going to be talking about that during the week that starts off with MLK Day, so we look forward to that event. Mary mentioned 3R Depot, the Saturday event. Saturday being a Saturday and the weekend, we probably have more events packed into that day than the weeknights, but we're looking to engage everybody and to inspire everybody. After all, there's nothing more important than leaving to our children a planet that's inhabitable, so we hope everybody comes out and enjoys the events.
Questions? Seems like we got a pretty thorough explanation. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just do have a question, because I think in the past that this has been done in conjunction with Climate Week, is that our DPWs sort of would organize something to collect the styrofoam?
I think it's part of the Saturday.
I've been collecting, I now have a big amount of styrofoam in my basement.
Last year, a woman drove up and her car was completely filled. So fill up your car and come on over to the 3R Depot. There's going to be many new things, thanks to Peggy's ingenuity. We're collecting peanuts this year, which is different and collected separately from your styrofoam.
Styrofoam peanuts, you mean?
Styrofoam peanuts. I'm sorry.
Not peanut butter peanuts.
No, styrofoam peanuts. And we'll also, a highlight, this is the second year, is Boston Building Materials, which is a great resource center for homeowners to get all kinds of building materials. They'll be having a big truck here, and you can bring over suitable materials. Be sure to check their website to find out what's suitable. I don't have that list with me right now, but there's some things that, you know, use nails or something you wouldn't be bringing, but almost everything else. What is that website? Boston Building Materials. So if your basement is filled, because you think you're the kind of person who thinks you're always going to need something, this is your chance. We are giving you opportunity to shred paper for a small fee. And there's, let's see, what else? There's a composting demonstration and Art Recreate Zone. It's going to be fun and a great time for families.
Some information about bicycling, I think. They're even going to be collecting cell phones, eyeglasses.
The senior center has, is going to be present, and they are big on collecting eyeglasses and cell phones. So we've got great participation with partners across town.
Sounds great. Yes, Selectman Benka?
Mary, I'm wondering, just looking at the brochure, you've just ticked off a number of things, Boston Building Materials, styrofoam collection. Is that on your website or on a website somewhere?
Yes.
Maybe I missed it in here.
It's here under 3R, it's called the 3R Depot.
On the Saturday.
3R Depot.
Okay.
3R stands for?
Where it says.
Reduce, recycle, and?
Yeah. Reduce, reuse, and recycle. Yes.
3R Depot Annex.
The Annex is the Commission on Women's Clothing Drive. It's, they're on Friday and Saturday, and they have been doing clothing drives, and this year, we combined the schedules and have this wonderful partnership going on.
Okay, terrific.
And they particularly, as I recall, need newborn clothing.
Zero to five years old.
Zero to five, but the zero newborn is something they'd like to emphasize.
Is my friend the polar bear going to be there?
We will, we'll try. You can be the polar bear. We're looking for a volunteer.
I guess it's a human.
We can play the video of you.
I should mention that besides our own website, BrooklineClimateWeek.org, we're also trying to post these events on a number of the other media around town, like Brookline.com, Boston.com, Wicked Local, Brookline Hub, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully, there'll be lots of ways to find this information.
So we hope to see you there and hope that you'll help spread the word, because we've put a lot of work into it. So, can we remind everybody that you can find out everything that we've heard about tonight at BrooklineClimateWeek.org, all one word, lowercase, on the web?
Do we have a link on the town's website, on the carousel, to this at this point?
This very day, I spoke with the IT department, and it should be appearing.
Great.
Great.
Terrific.
On Facebook and Twitter, too. Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you.
We do have a sort of resolution in honor of Climate Week, which we will provide to you. There is a signed copy available, and I'm, I guess, happy to read it all out. I don't think you need to. But I don't have to. What I will say is that it ends with, "Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen calls on all departments and town government to continue to participate in reducing carbon emissions, to promote greening town-sponsored events, and to support the town-wide CO2 reduction in the Climate Action Plan. Therefore, be it further resolved that the Selectmen call upon members of the community to work together to forge a sustainable future." And now, therefore, we, members of the Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim January 20th through 26th, 2014, as Climate Action Week. And we can take a vote on that. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. See you at all of these events.
See you at Climate Week.
Great. Okay. Our next calendar item are interviews, and we actually have a candidate for the Climate Action Committee. Well timed. Strange coincidence. Ms. Berkman?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and what brings you to be interested in this particular organization.
Okay. A little bit about myself. I grew up in Newton, Massachusetts, and I went to Boston University. And I just finished this summer, I've been working for the Federal Department of Energy on an energy efficiency pilot in the state of Connecticut, and that ended in July, August. And so I moved home to start a nonprofit company that helps utilities and municipalities run effective environmental campaigns. So that's what I'm doing currently, and I'm also at Hopkins for Nonprofit Management, Johns Hopkins. And I'm very passionate about energy, clean energy, renewable energy, energy efficiency. And I've worked with a lot of municipalities in the past, and so I'm excited about to get involved with the Brookline Climate Action Committee.
Any questions from members of the board?
No, I will just say for someone so young, she seems to have a very good resume.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Selectman Benka, you had a?
I actually have a question. Back in my former life, I worked with MassSave.
Oh, yeah.
Which obviously works with the utilities. And I'm just wondering what, when you said you're a nonprofit, is working with utilities, I'm wondering what sort of niche you're filling.
Well, so I actually worked on Western MassSaves. That was one of my first jobs out of college, which was bringing MassSaves to the western part of the state and focusing on behavior change. And essentially, what the nonprofit that I'm working on now is doing is we're taking what we learned in Connecticut and helping to use community-based outreach and data platforms so we can hold the utilities and the home performance contractors accountable and to have transparency, so we know how many home, or will know how many homes have been done, what has been done in the homes, if the contractors were effective or if they weren't. And we also provide support to the contractors to grow their small businesses, and then we help the public administrators and the utilities design programs and focus on giving back to the community and working with groups like the Climate Action Committee or the schools, et cetera, to spread the word and not going through their traditional channels of, like, paid media.
Are you funded by the utilities?
So currently, we're not, we're, this is something that we're forming, so it's coming off the DOE, so we, we're not currently being funded through the utilities or by anyone. Once we receive our 501(c)(3) status, we'll go to incubators and foundations to get the money to support, but all the intellectual property, you know, all those, we have data tracking, all the stuff that we learned from Connecticut, we wanted to share nationally, and that's why we're creating this nonprofit, coming off the heels of this grant.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, yes.
I'd just like to talk for a second about the Climate Action Committee. Jess has been at the last couple of meetings, and her energy has been wonderful. And the committee has gone through a change of leadership, and it's going through a period of self-examination and trying to figure out where the committee should go next. So I'm very excited to be part of that, and I hope you all will consider Jess, that she's been, made quite an impact within the committee.
Well, she certainly seems to be extremely well-qualified, and I, I'm not, let's see, are we actually, can we do this appointment tonight? No, I don't think so. So we will be making, I hope, our appointments fairly shortly. You'll hear from us in writing. I know there is vacancy, and therefore, there's probably not anything to hold us back, but you're not scheduled on our calendar for this evening. We have to do it at a duly posted meeting.
Okay.
But you will hear from us. Thanks very much for your interest.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another very well-qualified person.
Thank you.
So you're here interested in the Commission for the Disabled, and again, we'll ask you to just tell us a little bit about yourself and how you would like to work with the town.
Yes, I recently became a town meeting member, just this past spring, and found it to be a very interesting experience and thought I'd like to be more involved. And certainly getting on a committee or a commission is one way to get more involved. I've had nearly a lifelong experience with disability, both personally and professionally, and so I thought the Disability Commission would certainly be a perfect fit for me.
Well, having read your resume, I would say you have extraordinary qualifications from your professional life, and I gather you also had some personal issues that when we look at individuals for the commission, we're happy to know that they are people who can share their own experience and clearly have great empathy for the others with similar kinds of disabilities.
Certainly, certainly, and I certainly would represent people with physical limitations.
Right. Questions from Ms. Alair?
I have been the Selectmen's representative on the commission, and I know that you've been in contact with Eileen Berger.
Correct.
And have some idea of the work of the commission.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if you want to expand a little bit on what you thought you might contribute to the commission, how you?
Well, you know, my background is certainly on employment issues for people with disabilities and vocational rehabilitation. I'd certainly want to, you know, pursue and follow up on those interests and my experience and knowledge in that field. But I'm also a senior, and so I've gotten interested in issues of seniors with disabilities. So I'd really like to pursue that, and I've taught with Eileen. She's very much interested in having someone in the commission pursue that area, too. So I think I really would like to pursue that, and certainly there are a lot of things for seniors in Brookline. So what we, I believe we'll be looking to do is coordinate our efforts with the efforts of, you know, the Council on Aging and so forth.
Absolutely.
As well as assist them with whatever projects need to be done and so forth.
Thank you.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, Chairman was just mentioning to me, Brookline can, I don't know if you're aware of them, but they are also looking, it's the Community Aging Network, I think it is. But anyway, they go out and do surveys of how well the snow's been cleared and the, you know, town intersections and things. And, you know, they're concerned about some of those mobility issues, too, so it might be good to.
Work with them, too.
Work with them, too.
Certainly, right. Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Alair? Again, I will just repeat, we're not making appointments tonight. I do believe there are vacancies on the commission, and I don't know if we have other candidates before we'll finally be making appointments, but you will hear from us in writing. Okay. As soon as we can finalize it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And then, Mr. Nsangu?
I think he was here.
Yes, I do believe he was, and we think he.
Marty, can you go see if he's?
No, he's not here. I don't see a low side. He's not, I just checked.
Yeah, well, I know.
Is that a gentleman who was sitting here?
Yeah, we think so. Unfortunately, he may have been given an earlier time and couldn't stay. I feel very sad, badly, about that. Well, I'll take up the next item, which is an update on the Diversity Equal Opportunity and Affirmative Action Committee, Selectman Daley.
Yes, well, I'll just wait for a second until Marty gets back into the room, because he's one of my committee members.
Sure, well, you know, while you're waiting, I'm going to just.
Marty, why don't you just come up to the microphone, because you can help me with the update from the Diversity Committee.
And before you start, and while we're waiting for Mr. Rosenthal, I just want to go quickly over some of the background history here, so that what you have to say falls into a kind of context. And I just want to comment that Brookline is committed to diversity and inclusion. And in fact, in 1968, about 130 citizens of the town met in groups for 18 months, making recommendations, basically responding to the federal civil rights legislation, and at that time, the Kerner Report on Civil Unrest. The topics of the recommendations included jobs, housing, community relations, education, and finance. And their report resulted in a bylaw that was passed in 1970, creating the Human Relations Commission, and giving it a very broad and ambitious charge, which included developing, and I'm quoting, "Developing opportunities within Brookline and the metropolitan area for those who are discriminated against, increasing communication across racial lines to destroy stereotypes, and to halt polarization, end distrust and hostility, and create common ground for efforts toward public order and social justice, increasing the capacity of public and private institutions to respond to the problems of the disadvantaged." And in addition, was charged with a range of responsibilities, which include to adopt affirmative action guidelines, to administer affirmative action programs relating to contract- affirmative action guidelines; to administer affirmative action programs relating to contracts; to investigate complaints charting discrimination or unlawful conduct; to institute and assist development of educational programs; and to promote equal rights and opportunities." And if that wasn't enough, in 1974, the town added youth resources in a bylaw, into the bylaw, and charged the Commission with preventing youth from involvement with drugs and gangs and increased the membership from 10 to 15. And under that responsibility, there were actually social service street workers hired to work with Brookline youth. In 2000, Town Meeting implemented another change with a new bylaw, establishing the Human Resources Department and the Human Resources Board. And that group is charged with a full spectrum of employee issues, including recruitment, hiring, development, training, retention, protection against discrimination and harassment, and grievance procedures. The HR Board develops equal opportunity policy and guidelines and oversees civil service and collective bargaining. In March 2013, a study committee chaired by Selectman Daley was appointed to review these bylaws and charges and to review all the changes in local, state, and federal laws and regulations since 1970, as well as to address the sometimes conflicting responsibilities crossing over between Human Relations Commission and the Human Resources Board and other town departments. For example, today, minority access to municipal contracts is the responsibility of our procurement and purchasing department. And also, today, there are many youth services from a variety of providers, after-school programs based in schools run by the town's Recreation Department, and other community-based services, which would include the new Brookline Teen Center that did not exist in 1974. And therefore, Selectman Daley, tell us what you guys have been doing about this.
Yes. Well, I think a primary focus that we have been working on has been rewriting the bylaw, which was quite out of date. But I will say, I certainly went into this with an idea like, well, we should get rid of the contracting part because that's being done by our procurement office, and maybe we don't need youth services anymore, and so on. And I have been, well, we haven't taken any votes on this, but let me just say, the way the conversation has gone leads me to believe that the members of the committee feel that there still is a role that this Commission might play in regard to looking at town contracts and youth issues and some of those areas, in addition to the primary mission of diversity and affirmative action and so on. So we have spent a lot of time, I wouldn't say we're trying, we're certainly not trying to rewrite these state or federal laws, but we have spent a great deal of time educating ourselves, I think, on the current state of the law as to affirmative action, what's allowed and/or what might be allowed. Sometimes it's not, it's not totally clear. You know, you can see a direction that the courts are headed in, but things are not necessarily totally clear in that area. We also have been working in recent meetings on actually the kind of mission statement, the overall focus that this bylaw should have, you know, the heart and soul of it, so to speak, as one member called it, the why, of why we would have this Commission. And we are, we have seen some drafting on the bylaw itself, and we've had a lot of discussion, as I say, as to what should be in there and what shouldn't be in there. I mean, clearly, the Commission no longer provides the kind of social work services or something like that. But one of our members is a teacher at the high school, and he has indicated that he thinks there are some kids in Brookline falling through the cracks, and maybe this Commission, you know, should play some kind of role. We did hear briefly from the superintendent of schools. I hope, we are, we're trying, and Marty will disagree with me on this, but I still have hopes that we can get this redrafted bylaw in before the close of the warrant. And then we can look at some other things, like, we would like to talk more with the schoolspeople about their efforts in the diversity of hiring and, you know, perhaps some of their programs for, for students. But the, and we will talk more after that closing of the warrant also about, I think one of the pieces of the charge was to give some direction to this board on an appropriate and current affirmative action or, you know, equal opportunity policies. So let me ask Marty, one of my committee members, to add to that or contradict it if he feels so moved.
I appreciate being invited to give a comment that, and obviously, I don't speak for anyone else on the committee. I'm very pleased and honored to be on the committee. Nancy's done a wonderful job, and it's a wonderful committee. The part that's been a surprise to me is the scope of the charge, not, not the charge, but the scope of the task. I mean, the charge reflects a task that has to be done, and it was a very thoughtful charge that hopefully, had we all had input, we would have come up with exactly that charge. But it's big. And let me just step back for one second to put in context what I'm about, the punchline of what I'm about to say. I thought I knew a lot about town government. I thought I knew a lot about the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission, I'll call it the Commission.
And for those people who do not know, you are speaking as a former selectman.
Yeah. By the way, I guess Marty Rosenthal, I don't know if I got identified for the year 100 of watchers out there.
For the record.
And I hope they get better sound out of Comcast than I do. I still can't get any sound on my BATV. I have to watch it online. But, you know, not so much from growing up in Brookline, but I've been a selectman. I was on the advisory committee. I've co-chaired Brookline PACs. You know, we've had people involved with Articles 9 and 10 last year on both sides of all those issues. I had great interest in the Commission as a selectman when I co-authored with Jeffrey Allen the Police Community Relations Report, one of my favorite things in my life. But I've really been amazed, even after the debates last, last spring that led to this, at the scope of this task. And I've come up with a phrase that Nancy hasn't heard yet, that this bylaw has breathtaking breadth. I mean, it really is amazing, the scope of this bylaw. I had never noticed this before, how much is in there. For instance, your charge correctly identifies fair housing. The bylaw has one word on housing in the general purpose section. That bylaw was drafted, as you said, in 1970. The fair housing bylaw is right after I moved on to bigger and better things in 1988, after being a selectman. And it was passed in 1988, but there was never an alteration of the 3.14 bylaw to spin up. The fair housing bylaw talks a lot about the Commission, but 3.14 doesn't mention the fair housing bylaw. And so the two things are not integrated. So that's, I view housing as sort of the 800-pound elephant in the room in terms of our, the whole diversity issue, that if we can't do better with diversity on housing and on the population in Brookline, it makes the challenge on everything else as far as diversity much more difficult. You know, there's been a lot of talk about lack of department heads. I know that the town officials are working very hard to get diverse department heads. I don't doubt that. But to the extent we have a lack of diversity in the population, it makes it that much harder. So I want us, for instance, to look at the housing issues. We haven't really had a chance to sink our teeth into that. The committee, I think, came largely out of the Articles 9 and 10 debate, and affirmative action and hiring became a big issue last spring, and it's been a big issue for our committee. We spent a lot of time working on it. We've had a lot of meetings, by my count, it's 11 or 12 meetings. And we spent a lot of time on that issue. It has some thorny legal issues. It has some thorny town hall issues, the relationship between the Commission and Human Resources. I was on TTO S when Human Resources was created. I don't remember giving a lot of thought to the interaction between those two boards on the hiring issues. If it happened, memory's not my strength, but I don't remember a lot of discussion about that. So that's, my point is merely that I am not optimistic that we could do a good job by this warrant. I've said that at our most recent meeting, that I've, you know, I don't mind saying what I believe. I think the youth issue was, this is the last example I'll give. There's a lot of consensus that the youth resources part of the bylaw is clearly outdated. But the question is, what should be in instead? I think there's a lot of sentiment that Nancy alluded to different things that we thought could be taken out, but maybe not. My view, and I think others, is that the Commission does have a role to look at issues. And we're still trying to define our terms, whether it's human rights, civil rights, diversity and so forth, across the board through town government and maybe in the community, but not to micromanage different things like procurement. But how to spell that out is not that simple. It's a delicate balance to, for the, to spell out how the Commission deals with the big picture without looking at the little picture. I don't have an answer to that yet for any of the agencies that we need to look at, let alone all of them. And on the youth thing, the sentiment that a lot has superseded the 1970 bylaw, when I was a kid in Brookline, they didn't have youth recreation sports. I mean, it's now a gigantic program. The point, I think, is that there's a sentiment that the Commission should play some role with youth issues, but not be the main agency. And it may be necessary, hopefully, with no fiscal demands and no new staff, to create a new citizen committee to try to get the various groups that are doing youth programs together once in a while. You know, the teen center, the school department, the recreation department, there's just half a dozen others. So anyway, we haven't settled that yet. And finally, although it's not a legal requirement, we haven't had any public hearings yet. We do have public comment at every meeting. I think it would be a good idea, and I've said this at one of our meetings, that we have a public hearing even before we have a warrant article. But I think to do that, we have to have some focus on what the issues are for the public. So I'm just kind of pessimistic, and I would respectfully ask you all to keep an open mind to the possibility that for us to do our job properly, we need to look to next fall instead of the spring. Certainly, the sunset clause in last year's Article 9 would not be violated. It just says until something comes bad. I know that, you know, you all expected, and Nancy has been pushing us to meet your expectation. But, you know, I personally, you know, be willing to take some heat for pushing to delay it, and I'm sure I'll get it.
Well, on a technical point, we are about to vote the schedule for the annual town meeting. And if you really want to know what your deadline for filing would be, it's March 13th. That would be the closing of the warrant.
Right. But that involves, there's a lot of drafting that would have to be done before that. And, you know, we're basically, I think rightfully so, at this point, focused more on the mission statement than the rest of the bylaw, which is, you know, going to be at least four or five more pages. So...
Okay. Selectman Daley, do you want...
Well, no, I mean, I will certainly agree that it's, it's complex and probably more complex than I or Marty or any of us thought going into it. I do want to say it's a, it's a wonderful committee, some very knowledgeable people in this area and people of goodwill working together. So that's been a pleasant experience. And, yeah, I don't, you know, I think I have to make the effort to move things along, and so I'm not ready to give up the deadline yet, but, you know...
And I'm always speaking for myself. I mean, you know, we haven't really had much discussion about this. I've mentioned it, but, yeah.
So we'll, we'll see. I will keep trying to, to move us forward, but I do, I will admit honestly that it may not be possible for us to get something done for this warrant.
I have a comment and a question, or a suggestion and a question. First, is it possible that this could be done in two phases and two stages, that maybe there are some things that are the low-hanging fruit and the things that are most obvious to change that there's maybe agreement on? And that can be incorporated in a warrant article for this spring and that the committee could continue on for the more difficult questions later?
You know, I would, I don't think you want to rewrite part of the bylaw and then rewrite the rest of the bylaw. Again, I think you need to have a, you know, something that's kind of integrated. As Marty says, even integrated with the other bylaws, like the fair housing stuff.
Well, that's, that's, actually, this relates to my second question. So my second question is that one of the first areas that were identified where the Commission was not quite in conformity with, with other bylaw provisions was as it relates to the Human Resources Board. Any thoughts yet at this stage on how to reconcile those two different boards and their, what their varying roles are? And if so, is that something that maybe we could address on a piecemeal basis this spring? Or is that, is that not, is that high hanging?
Well, you're kind of getting to the core of the...
Maybe that's high-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is kind of, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me, I'll just give my own response on that as well, which is that I think that it is high-hanging fruit because it's one of the most difficult issues and one of, was at least one of the most controversial. I don't know if that will remain so. But it also exemplifies, in my mind, not, at least conceptually, not an atypical issue from all the others, which is, how can the Commission play a role, say, encouraging things like diversity and human rights and so forth, but not step on the toes of procurement or housing? You know, it's not, it's not a terribly different issue with Human Resources, it's just it's stickier with Human Resources. So it seems to me that we need to resolve that big question across the board, which might have some special ramifications for, for the Human Resources issue. I mean, my view is that they, they need to play some kind of a leadership and visionary role, but not, they can't micromanage procurement. They can't micromanage youth programs. They can't, and they, I don't, my personal view is they can't micromanage hiring. But how you get that balance, it seems to me, is a difficult question, and I'm not sure it's that different for Human Resources than it is for the others. So it seems to me that we need to address it globally and then see how it applies to the hiring issue, which may have some separate issues. That's a long-winded answer, I'm sorry.
Well, that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Well, we honestly have been working pretty hard, I think, so...
No, I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that for a second.
Yeah, I've got a whole briefcase to show. After all this committee...
Yeah, I'm up to two bags now. I try to only carry one with me to the meetings, but...
And we just got about a dozen new reports at the last meeting to look at, which, you know...
Well, I think we're going to have the housing people in for...
I think that might help to understand...
And I will also say, we're having tomorrow night, something for you to look forward to. We're having Lisa Paradies, the Director of Recreation, in tomorrow night.
And by the way, on the housing thing, I do commend the town hall staff, especially, I guess, the planning department for the report that was done last year, which I've looked at and helps me to be alarmed about how big our job is. But I don't know if the committee members have really focused on it that much yet, and hopefully, they will if we can have, I'd say, a whole evening devoted to the housing issue. So, but, but that was a wonderful report. And although, you know, it's a mixed blessing because it shows how challenging things are, which is no great shock to any of us. because it shows how challenging things are, which is no great shock to any of us in this room.
Well, I can go on record as saying that when I became aware of the scope of the bylaw, I knew what you were getting into.
You didn't warn us before asking us.
So I'm not particularly surprised to hear this. I have a sort of gut feeling that it's better to get it right than to get it fast. But I also think that somehow among yourselves, you're going to need to identify the components that are not, and I'm sort of following up a little bit on Selectman Goldstein. I don't know about high-hanging or low-hanging, but what I do think is you ought to go through some sort of prioritizing internally and decide which are the things that are not being done, all right? What it is that is not, that nobody else does, or for which it is important to provide additional.
We've actually tried to have that conversation. And basically, I've heard on some of the things, like the procurement, which they, the committee has, the, our existing commission and prior versions of it have not been involved with for many years, and was my contention that it's a very complicated legal area, very highly regulated by Massachusetts law, so probably best to leave it to our procurement officer. But members of the committee felt that, several members felt fairly strongly that although the commission hadn't been dealing with it, perhaps they should be looking at that area.
But why should they? I guess my question to you, my challenge is to be able to explain why.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, but you've got to be able to clearly and articulately explain why do we need a different entity from the one that's got the responsibility under state law doing the same thing, a different version of the same thing, and how do you justify it? You folks are the ones who have to think those things through.
Well, certainly shouldn't be the same thing. I mean, you know, my view is that they can, the commission can play a role across the board if it's a limited role, a limited but important role.
Okay, but then you really got to be able to define the role.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's my challenge. I'm saying, you folks have before you many, many various tasks that were assigned to the commission originally, and most of them are no longer being pursued. Some of them were never pursued. So if you consider recreating the multitasking commission that never was able to handle all the tasks in the first place, I don't think you're going to accomplish what I understood your hope, your goal to me.
Yeah, that's a point well taken.
Big deal.
I don't think we disagree with that. I think the question is, how do you make it an important role but limited?
Sure.
I mean, it's got to be both.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
We have been wrestling with a lot of the philosophic aspects of this.
All right, well, clearly, it's not over yet, and you folks need to really give some thought to whether March 13th is doable. I mean, it's a practical, it's just a practical matter.
Well, maybe we can, at some point, dock it for discussion and just see. I haven't heard, when I've spoken, I haven't heard much disagreement, except from Nancy.
Well, they, she's trying to wrap things up. Some of the other committee members did ask me to do a timeline of when we'd need, and I have, was looking to, since we had the thing in our packet today with all the dates on it, I was working on that timeline, so I will pass it out, and perhaps that will stimulate that discussion.
Okay, and I can tape these remarks, and I don't have to recycle them tomorrow night. I'll just tell people who watched the tape. Thank you all.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. We don't get applause very often. Okay, then we will now move to actually setting the deadline. The next item before us is the scheduling of the annual town meeting and basically setting up the calendar. We have a proposed calendar, and I just want to highlight to everybody that we've got Passover scheduled, Passover happens to be on significant dates because it means that we probably should not meet on two Tuesdays. We should not meet on two Tuesdays, April 15th and April 22nd. I think we can accommodate by holding a meeting on a Thursday or a Wednesday, but we're going to have to, I guess we can't do the Wednesday. I think Wednesday's also, one of the Wednesdays is also Passover, but just be aware that we are, we'll have to be flexible about Selectman's meetings' dates in the month of April. And the rest of it's pretty straightforward, so you looked at.
But those what you're talking about now are just meetings of this board, we're not talking about town.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm just simply making it clear that in order for us to review warrant articles, for the board to get through its business, we cannot just skip two valuable Tuesday night meetings in April.
Well, as I learned in the fall, having a committee dealing with diversity meeting on a Jewish holiday is also not a good idea.
Not a good idea, right. Okay, so are there any questions or concerns about this schedule that we've got before us?
So this has the town election on May 6th.
Yeah.
And then town meeting starting on May?
27.
When is Memorial Day?
I think we're going around Memorial Day, but I think it will be, in other words, if we do three nights, the third night would be after Memorial Day. I looked it up, but I've forgotten.
Yeah, it's late.
Yeah, this is later than usual.
Yeah.
And Memorial Day is the 26th, so the first night would be the day after Memorial Day.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, I got it backwards. It's not that it's the last, it's not that it's the end, it's early, actually. All right. Okay.
So just to reiterate this, warrant opens February 13th, warrant closes March 13th.
Yeah.
Town election, May 6th, and town meeting on May 27th, May 29th, and June 3rd if necessary.
Right, and that would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which this year occurs early on the 26th of May.
Right.
Okay, we're all on board, in agreement. Then I move that we approve the date for the annual town meeting to be Tuesday, May 27th, and working backwards, that means the warrant would open on February, Thursday, February 13th, and would close on Thursday, March 13th. Everybody on board with this?
Yep.
All in favor then, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, I gather there's a question about our.
The town election also, that's it.
Oh, sorry. Let's vote the election date, too. And therefore, I move that we set the date for the annual town election to be Tuesday, May 6th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I think we will hold the appointments until our next meeting. There's some question about candidates for the Conservation Commission that need to be addressed, so we'll hold that appointment. And that being the case, I think we're going to have a record early ending to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Tuesday, January 7th.
Can I just ask, before we totally leave, Mr. Klechner, I just wondered with this really cold weather, are we, I, having any issues with, I know we don't have a lot of homeless people, and we're fine, but, I mean, I assume that the police department and everybody is kind of keeping an eye out for anyone that might be.
Yes, I mean, fortunately, there hasn't been any power, anything of significance, so we're keeping an eye out, council on aging, health department and others. We're hoping this cold snap will break in the next day or two, but, yes, if anybody does have any issues, they should feel free to call.
The health department?
The police department or health department or any public health or safety agency of the town. We have had a couple of situations with not only public but also private buildings with pipe, pipes freezing and cracking and leaking.
But we are very fortunate not to be in Minneapolis.
Right.
Or Chicago, or actually, in a funny way, equally, I'm sure, shocking to those folks in places like North Carolina where their temperatures went down to 20 degrees. At least here, 20 is not that unusual.
At least, yes, we own warm jackets.
Yes, right.
Unlike those guys.
When my southern relatives come to visit, they only will come in the summertime because they don't own winter coats. Okay, but I think we are dismissed.